Good evening. This regular meeting of the Mount Horeb Area School District Board of Education will come to order. It is seven o'clock. Roll call. Danny. Diana.
Here.
Jeff. Jessica.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
I'm here. Danny.
She gave a thumbs up.
Oh, she did. Okay, fantastic. And Jeff. Sure, we'll get Jeff situated soon. Uh, Dr. Salerno, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Let's all stand if we can and say the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a volunteer to say the district's mission statement for us?
I can do it, Rod.
Thank you, Jessica.
The Mount Horeb Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jessica. Item 2A approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any revisions? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the presented agenda.
So moved. This is Diana.
Second, Kimberly.
Diana has moved and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the agenda is approved. Item 2B approval of the October 26, 2020, regular meeting agenda. Excuse me, regular meeting minutes. The chair would entertain a.
Diana, so moved.
This is Jessica, second.
Diana's made a motion to approve and Jessica has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the regular meeting minutes from the meeting of October 26, 2020 are approved. Item 3A, school news. Dr. Salerno.
Well, I think our student representative is on the call this evening. I'll let her go first. Hey, Kate, how are you?
Good. How are you? Good. Okay. Hi, everyone. So first off, I wanted to thank everyone who donated to our DECA Trick or Can event. We got a ton of donations and we're looking forward to sending those off to a local food pantry and helping out our community. Um, secondly, Madison College is offering an EMT class for any student who's completed 11th grade, and we're looking to spread the word about that and get any interested students involved, and that begins this January, I believe. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Dr. Salerno.
Wonderful. Yeah, and thank you, Kate, for always doing such a nice job of representing our student body. Uh, two items for the board. In addition to that update, I wanted to note that very soon, Colleen Essaim, our activities director, will be sending out a document uh, to families, asking them if they'd like to participate in winter athletics, and then kind of some protocols around that. And then this afternoon, I, I heard uh, that we have some new gear in the Viking store that I thought I'd share with you. Look at these nice new clothing items that you can purchase at our school store, starting November 9. If you happen to be a Facebooker, you can see a link to where you can purchase those items directly, just in time for the holiday season upcoming. That's all we have.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Salerno. Uh, moving on then to item 3B, citizen comments. Uh, those wishing to speak, do you have the, the trusty citizen comments phone, Dr. Salerno? Very good. So if you're interested in speaking as a part of citizen comments, please text your first and last name and your address to 608-250-9166. That number is 608-250-9166.
No one yet.
All right. We'll wait another moment. The number is 608-250-9166. That's toll-free. 608-250-9166. Going once for citizen comments. Going twice. Hearing none. Item 4A, personnel transactions.
Board members, you'll note an addendum to your packet this evening?
This is Diana, motion to approve personnel, personnel transactions.
Second, Jeff.
Diana has moved and Jeff has seconded a, a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Items 5A and B, the consent agenda. Would anyone like either of these two items pulled?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Kimberly.
Second, Diana.
Kimberly has made a motion uh, to approve the consent agenda, excuse me, the consent agenda with the second from Diana. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6A, student spotlight. Dr. Salerno.
Oh, how lucky we are tonight. Tonight, I see her entire family here, Ms. Ella. And, oh, hi there. How are you?
Hi.
We want to sing your praises for a minute here, and I'm grateful that we get to have your building principal, Mrs. Johnson, on the call tonight. You were recommended as our student spotlight by Mrs. Fish. Hi, Mrs. Johnson, how are you?
I'm fantastic, Super Salerno. Yes, Ella Bell is amazing. So Mrs. Fish said to me, Mrs. Johnson, I have the perfect student spotlight for you. You know how hard it is to kind of form a community in this virtual world. Well, Ella Bell makes that job a lot easier. Ella's one of the first ones on the call every time, greeting every one of her classmates by name when they come on the call. And she's literally one of the last people off the call saying goodbyes and wishing wells. And so those are those kind of kids that you say, wow, they are part of building this amazing classroom culture virtually. Um, Mrs. Fish has been so impressed by how kind and caring and helpful she is. And again, as you can see, and as you look at her, just an absolute ray of sunshine every ounce of every day. So we are um, celebrating Ms. Ella Bell today for her wonderful contributions to our school.
Ella, who are those amazing people in the, in your, in your family there?
This is my mom, Amber. This is my dad, Justin. That is my brother, Colton. He is 12 years old. That's Brayden, 13. And then that's Dawson. He's 11, he's almost 11, but he's 10.
Amazing family you have. We know that the wonderful skills and the love you have for others is born out of the good work of your family and the things that your family does to instill that. We had the pleasure, Ms. Johnson and I, to come over to your house the other day. Can I show everyone the picture we took? Can you see that? I love the little leg kicker, by the way.
That's Ella.
Then here's, here's another picture. We're showing your Viking pride. Oh, we're just so happy for you. Congratulations. Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Ella.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Ella, I just, um, I just took a bunch of screenshots and we'll get those to you somehow so you can see yourself with the whole school board on this really, really important night, to the extent that that would be, and that would be meaningful to you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, moving on to item 6B, Committee Chair Reports, Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Committee, Jeff.
Yeah, we met last Monday. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we met last Monday. Dave Reed gave the Building and Grounds uh, report of uh, a lot of the uh, work around the building, replacing the concrete and uh, and uh, the sidewalks were, that need to be replaced. Some of it was for the village to be half and half on. He also reported on the, there was uh, some other work with yards, with the trees, that still need to be taken care of. The buildings are still up in shape. They have a couple of spots open for custodians, and he's hoping that they were filled by last Friday. Uh, and uh, our transportation coordinator informed us about the new uh, special needs van that came in, and that uh, it was a pretty nice looking vehicle, and that uh, he also stated that the uh, other van, white vans, were getting up there in miles and age and a little bit of rust, and that uh, they're gonna start working on switching them out. And uh, they were also talking about uh, final preparations for the routes for bringing in K through 2. And Dave Reed also, in the referendum update, stated that most of the dollars of the 200, or the 240-some thousand, I think it was, was gonna be updated and done by the 15th of November or before Thanksgiving, depending upon weather issues. That will be the end of my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee. Diana.
Hello. So the Finance Committee met on October 19th. Uh, we started out the meeting by being fortunate enough to accept five donations um, to our school district, three of which will help support a new sign for our high school, electronic sign. Um, then we moved on to discussing the three budget items that we talked about at the last meeting and approved. Uh, the expenditure budget, the tax levy, and then the general fund, um, fund balance. Um, after we talked about those three things, we discussed the um, new SS school level reporting requirements that the DPI is requiring of us. We will be talking about that again as those, uh, we believe will be released to the public sometime mid-November. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for November 9.
Great. Thank you, Diana. Any questions for Diana? Hearing none, we'll move to Safety and Wellness. Leah.
All right. So our last meeting was also on October 19th. Um, we had a short meeting so that we could ensure we could get on to the Special Board meeting without any issue. Um, at our meeting, we discussed the equity statement, which is on our agenda later on tonight. Um, we also discussed updates to the Equal Opportunity Employment Policy, number 411, which is also on our agenda tonight. Um, we had an update on the AODA grant that we received of $15,000. Um, that money will focus on NEMA, I think is how you say it, which is an equity program. Um, we also discussed the Mental Health Coalition, and that they have five main objectives for this year, focusing mostly on suicide prevention. And we will meet again on November 16th.
Great. Thank you very much, Leah. Any questions for Leah? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 6C, WASB Policy and Resolution Committee Report from Kimberly.
Thank you, Rod. It is time to put together a new one of these resolution books. So if you could pull up my slides, I'd be happy to provide the board a refresher on what that process looks like and give you a preview of the new resolutions that will be up for a delegate assembly vote in January at our state convention. Okay, so if you look over our committee function and schedule slide, you'll see that we gave ourselves a very condensed timeline this fall to get our work done. And the work itself looked quite a bit different, too. Last year, we looked at 19 submitted resolutions that could go on to be public education positions before our state legislature, and this year, there were 10. Last year, about a third did not make it out of the Policy and Resolutions Committee. And this year, we managed to muscle all of the submitted resolutions right out to the January convention. So if we move ahead a slide, uh, our committee members and the way that we look at regions are divided up in Wisconsin as follows on the map. We want our full WASB memberships to know that we do come from all corners of the state, and that we do recognize that the urban and rural districts have very different needs. So we do want to get a good overview to represent all of those. And if we flip ahead to the specific resolutions that were proposed to us this year, you can see they're much heavier on the legislative end than usual, and that's a direct result of being involved in a pandemic and needing state and federal assistance to help our public schools right now, starting right at the top with broadband access. So Governor Evers does have a task force in place for broadband access. Um, but the unreliability of broadband in our state is really coming down to a household level right now with virtual learning. And so we really wanted to get something permanent in our position book that would outlast Governor Evers' task force. Um, since this will live on past our, past our pandemic, both in terms of broadband access and affordability. Special education funding, which has long received a lot of well-deserved attention from WASB as we continue to try to regain more of our reimbursement rates, now needs some flexibility consideration as we work backwards to fill in the gaps with COVID interruption-related services to get those special education students back to where they should have been if the pandemic did not occur. Assessment and report card waivers, that's going to be a tricky one because the federal government, under the Department of Education, will ultimately decide what needs to be reported on by the states. But many schools in Wisconsin have already sought exemption this year. Many type of standard district-level report cards that would come out of the DPI due to the inability and cumbersome nature to accurately test in our virtual school setting. Rehiring of retired teachers and staff and how their insurance policies, policies factor into their new employee contracts has also long been lobbied at WASB. I'm sure you've heard about that before, and this remains on their active list because the rules often impede districts from rehiring those retired teachers. School safety legislation, unfortunately, continues to need continuous review and language updates as new types of problems occur in virtual settings, and now different trainings are needed. On the curriculum side, as the committee will deal with Time Researching Act 31, that's a state mandate that goes all the way back to the 1989-1991 budget. Um, and this requires schools to teach about our federally recognized Native American tribes. Um, this teaching should occur twice in elementary school and at least once in high school. But there were never any follow-up acts requiring any audits or evaluations for compliance. And some self-reporting is showing that some schools do not comply either partially or wholly with this state mandate. Procedurally, there is a school board in the state having some big issues with superintendent evaluations, and those evaluations ending up in the public record domain, and they wish to make these permanently confidential, and think that that might have some statewide implications as well. On the social justice front, the debate on retiring Native American mascots has returned for a second go. You may recall that last year, this resolution failed by a very wide margin at the January convention, with those speaking against wishing to honor the relationships that local communities have with tribes in their area. But a great deal of new social justice energy has occurred in 2020, and now several new school districts wrote us to ask if we would please consider rewriting this resolution, and so we agreed to do so and take it forward. And lastly, are two purely fiscal pieces. Last year, the Hudson School District pitched a new one-cent sales tax that would be designated for school technology and infrastructure needs. And this would take some of the pressures off having to do continuous referendums resulting in our property tax increases. Last year, the committee unanimously voted no to that proposal. This year, the majority said yes. And so we've been studying Iowa's one-cent program as a model for our arguments in January. And finally, the enrollment hold harmless piece is no stranger to any public school district this year. Unfortunately, with students unenrolling and open ruling elsewhere due to the virtual learning aspect, we will need a different per pupil calculation system if we do hope to maintain our level of services. So moving on, that takes us to the framework that we use to consider and write each proposal for the January convention, and that boils down to what you see on the screen. Is this resolution timely? Is it worthy of our time to get it ready for January, and is it worthy of WASB's time as a potential statewide concern for all public school districts? And this year, as I mentioned, we did get all 10 to move on. So that's an update on my committee. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Questions for Kimberly.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Kimberly. We know how hard you work on that particular project, so thank you. Thank for, thank you for all your time and effort. Uh, item 6D, COVID-19 update, Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again, board members. If you don't mind me just making a brief comment about the last report. You know, we are fortunate to have Kimberly, having been selected by our regional director for our WASB, to serve in this role. Uh, it's quite an honor uh, that we have someone from Mount Horeb be represented, and as you can clearly see, she does a very nice job of, of representing not just our district's interests, but those of the entire region. And so we're looking forward to what comes to fruition out of that important work. If you don't mind, I'd like to share my screen with you one more time tonight. I want to update you as to a new um, resource that we have available to our families. Um, and hopefully, even a moment here, you're going to see the school district's website. And if you can scroll down, you'll notice this box here, uh, along the bottom, uh, called COVID-19. Uh, you may remember back at October, board members, I mentioned the importance of staying as transparent and communicative as possible with our community. And one such way in which we're doing that is by creating uh, this new dashboard. Uh, and I want to extend a note of gratitude to our school nurses, who have just been amazing throughout this entire process. This is the latest example of their outstanding efforts. And of course, our Director of Student Services, Brian Johnson, continues to help coordinate this information. This is as a result of October 27th. It's our intent, in order to um, provide constant updates, we'll be doing this on Tuesday afternoons. Uh, but this is effective as of July 1st. So you can see how it's been differentiated based upon positive staff cases in the district, positive student cases who are on campus, and then uh, quarantine of, of staff, including active positive cases. And then any kind of isolation, uh, including active cases amongst our students. And so we're grateful to have this as one more tool in order to help inform uh, what, what's currently happening in our district. You know, we're also so fortunate to have had a responsive community to our survey that went out uh, back almost now, two weeks ago, that helps us discern between whether or not our K-2 families wish to have a hybrid or a virtual methodology of instruction. And I, if I were to put a number on it, I would guess about 57, 58% of our families in K-2 on average chose to go um, hybrid, and then the remaining balance uh, going virtual. And so we have been spending the weekend and the, the days leading up to um, uh, release of some data to our faculty and staff today that outlines specifically how uh, children within each teacher's classroom uh, made a choice. What we hope to do now is leverage the great will and input of our amazing faculty and staff to talk about how we can't help get to a yes for as many of our employees as possible, in terms of their requests for virtual or for hybrid. And of course, guiding our work in this effort will continue to be uh, any requests that there may be for leave. It is November 2nd, the beginning of November, and wouldn't you know, we're already beginning to think about snow days, right? Uh, remember last October, Halloween, we had uh, inches and inches of snow on the ground? Well, now we need to begin thinking about, will we really have snow days this year? Uh, you know, as well as I do, that because of the um, abridged version of our scheduling, uh, we are trying to get through as much of the sequencing and breadth of our curriculum as possible so as to set our students up for success when they go on to uh, their next grade level. Uh, this was especially true even in our conversation tonight in the Education Committee. We envision uh, any time that we think inclement weather is coming down the pike, that we're gonna try to shift to e-learning as much as possible. Now, some might argue, well, gee whiz, can't we let kids be kids? And we think that because of the flexible nature of our schedule, we can allow our kids to do both. To enjoy the beauty and wonder and, and, of, of the winter season, but then at the same time, continue moving forward in a positive direction as relates to instruction. And in fact, when I send out tomorrow's board recap, I'll include an update as to how we'll push out information related to weather. So, uh, we are on track uh, for our, um, um, rolling out of our K-2 program. Uh, thank you again to our families. Uh, Wednesday, November 11th, Thursday, the 12th, and Friday, the 13th. Those will be days in which our staff will be getting the process of pivoting uh, to their new instructional models. And I do believe we're on track to notifying families on or around November 11th as to what those assignments may be. So that's what I have for now. Uh, what kinds of questions, if any, may I answer for you?
Questions for Steve.
This is Leah. I have one question on the dashboard. Um, the last one, quarantine and isolation students. So it's not students who are on campus. So are those like self-reported or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's what I figured, but I thought I better check.
Other questions for Dr. Salerno? All right. Thank you, Dr. Salerno. Uh, moving on to item 7A, First Reading Anti-Racism Statement. Mr. Johnson.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm excited to bring this statement forward for the board. Um, the um, Safety and Wellness Committee has been meeting on this and discussing this statement for, for quite a few months now. Um, and kind of wordsmithing some of it and really making sure that it encompassed what we were looking for as a district. And so here it is in front of you. Um, it's a statement about um, equity, what we believe in as a school board, um, and specific action steps that we're gonna move forward in. Um, creating an equity team, listening to student voices, um, reviewing our curriculum, um, as well as continuing our professional development. Um, what we've talked a lot about in SAW, um, is that this fits right in with our strategic plan. Um, it fits in with the work that we're committed to doing. Um, the board committed to changing our, our mission to all be, make sure that all students are included in it. And, and we truly mean all means all, and a statement, um, like we're developing from, from us, the school board, it means a lot to a lot of people, so.
Questions for Brian? Questions for Brian? Comments, suggestions about the statement?
This is Leah, motion to approve.
Jeff, second.
This is Jessica.
Jessica, were you going to second the motion?
No, I was actually going to say something.
Okay, then hang tight. I think Jeff, I think Jeff.
Hi, second.
Jeff seconded the motion. Go ahead, Jessica.
I think this is great. I'm glad that this was done. I'm appreciative of all the work that went into it. My only thought was if we should add a definition of actually what we mean by equity. One quick example that I had just recently read was, you know, like, "learning forward", and they say, "equity is the outcome of educator practices that respect and nurture all aspects of student identity." I think it's sort of alluded to here, but I just wonder if we want to say something that just says like, "by equity, we mean this." I don't know what others think. I don't, I don't want to hold this up at all because I think this is fantastic, but that was my one thought when I read it.
Do we, I'm afraid I don't know. Would we approve a change like that in, as part of this vote, or would this be incorporated and we'd discuss it at the next reading?
I might advise, Mr. President, that we bring it back for Brian and myself to maybe even work with Jessica to frame what that might look like, and then bring it back to the board on November the 16th, if that'd be okay. Of course, I know we have two motions on the floor right now, though.
Fair enough.
I can rescind by motion.
Leah? Leah has withdrawn her motion. All right. Moving on to item 7B, first reading advanced placement courses policy, number 475. This is Straka.
And thank you. Ms. Straka is not on the call this evening, but I'm pleased to step in and share with you the good work of the Education Committee. And quite frankly, we're very proud of the fact that we're taking time now to review our Board of Education policies from an equity lens now. We know that it's extremely important that our students, all students, each and every single one of our students, has access to courses. And we found that there was a paragraph embedded within our advanced placement course policy that kind of takes away some of that access. And so we're proposing to the board tonight that we remove the paragraph that you see that I've just highlighted here. We don't think it's fair to the advanced placement teachers and guidance counselors to be the gatekeeper, if you will, as to who can and cannot participate and who they prognosticate as having potential or a lack of potential in advanced placement courses. Why not let kids get access as much as possible? And we also found that another gatekeeper had to do with payment for examinations, the advanced placement tests. Not everyone enjoys the same blessings that we do, and we want to make certain that we don't let that be a factor as to why a student cannot participate in advanced placement testing. This is part of our administrative strategic plan, is to look at equity as one of our three lenses in terms of our work moving forward. And we'd ask the Board of Education to please consider this policy as amended this evening, please. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Was that Diana?
This is Jessica, second.
Diana, did you make that motion? I'm sorry.
No, it was Danny.
Danny, I'm so sorry, Danny. Danny and Jessica seconded a motion to move this, this policy to the next reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I do think we have everyone on board tonight. If every board member is here and they could support this, we could do a roll call vote if you'd be open to that.
Well, I think, okay. By what, for what, we're going to do a roll call at any rate. What was, to move this along more quickly?
Thank you so much.
We could approve it tonight if we do a roll call vote.
All right, all right. Fair enough. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The s's are seven, the noes are zero. The motion carries and the amended policy is agreed to. Item 7C, first reading equal educational opportunity policy. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, good evening again. This is actually a pretty simple change. As the administrative team, we've been going through Title IX training, many hours of Title IX training. And what they reiterated to us was that really the end of the appeal process for a Title IX complaint should end at the superintendent. Otherwise, if we include the board in it, the board would also have to go through the 14 to 16-hour training that comes with it. And just figuring that nobody would want to continue to go through that, our only change in it is just taking the appeal process and removing the "and" board and just ending it at the superintendent.
It might also be helpful to note that if someone felt compelled to move beyond the superintendent's decision, the Office of Civil Rights, based out of Chicago, Illinois, would then be the next step. So it doesn't necessarily end the process for them. They, it would just end the process within the district's purview.
Thank you, Dr. Solerino. Are there, are there other comments or questions?
This is Diana, motion to approve.
Jeff, second.
Diana has, Diana has made a motion to approve. Jeff has beaten you to it, Kimberly. As a, as a second, or is there any further discussion? It'd be good if we had a little bit of discussion because Danny has had to restart her computer. And we'd lose our, we'd lose our seventh member. So certainly, we have something to discuss with regard to this policy.
And Danny's back.
Danny's back. Awesome. Great. Well, Diana has, has made a motion and Jeff has seconded the motion to approve this, this policy. We will take a roll call since all seven of us are here and we can approve it tonight. That's awesome. Danny? Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kimberly? Kimberly. Okay, thank you. Leah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The s's are seven, the noes are zero. The motion carries and equal, equal educational opportunity policy, number 411, is adopted as amended. Item 8A, citizen comments. If you wish to speak, please send a text with your name and address to 608-250-9166. We'll wait just a second.
No one yet.
No one yet. Okay. Going once for citizen comments. Going twice. That's all she wrote for, for citizen comments tonight. Item nine, future agenda items, you'll see them listed there. If you have, have thoughts about prospective agenda items, please, please let Steve or me know. Item 10, schedule of next meetings. Dr. Solerino, is there anything that you wanted to call out?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Great. Awesome. Well, before we go on to item 11, I think it's only fitting that, that we all wish Dr. Solerino a very, very happy birthday. We, I, I mean, I'm happy to sing, but I don't know that anyone else would be, and no one wants to hear me sing at any rate. But I think we can all wave to wish Dr. Solerino a very happy birthday. We know it's a very, very, very important one today. So that's.
Bringing the 29th anniversary of my 21st birthday. That makes me 50 today.
Yeah, don't make me do that math. That, that, that math gets to be too much. All right. Well, happy birthday, Dr. Solerino. Item 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Jeff has made a motion to adjourn.
Second, Diana. Second.
Danny has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Steve.
Thank you. Happy birthday.